Good evening. Welcome to the March tenth, two thousand and fourteen Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also join us now for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, okay. Next, moving on, we have three public hearings scheduled this evening. The first public hearing is scheduled to receive public comment on proposed financing for construction and installation of new lighting at a cost of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars at the Meekins Field Athletic Area. This is located at sixteen thirty-four North Croatan Highway. This is to, the public hearing is to take any comments on this financing, excuse me, financing arrangement. We did have a sign up sheet for the public hearing this evening. There were no, no one signed up to speak at this particular public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak just on this topic, on this public hearing? Anyone that wishes to speak on this? Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing and open the floor for discussion. Town manager, do you have any, any comments that you want to share on this item?
Sure, yes ma'am. As we spoke at previous meetings when this public hearing was set, this is a requirement by the local government commission to have a public hearing on this financing because it is improvements to real property. This will be construction and installation of the lighting. We did put this financing in with our larger financing package. The motion that we would request from the board is outlined there in the memo. It would be, the financing would be with Sun Trust Equipment Financing and Lease Corporation. The interest rate for the four-year financing is one point one-two-five percent, which does apply to the Meekins Field improvements and certain other equipment. And then the interest rate for the fire apparatus, which is a ten-year financing period, is two point one-two-zero. So these, these are very good rates, and would ask the board to approve this as presented.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments, or Debbie, on this financing arrangement? Questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order, and I'll draw your attention when making the motion to the four bulleted items that could be included in the motion. Is there a motion on the floor?
And it could just be as presented.
Yeah. I'll make the motion that the financing arrangements for Meekin Field lighting improvements and other lease purchases for fiscal year two thousand thirteen and fourteen be approved as presented.
Aye, second.
Any discussion, additional discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The second public hearing this evening is on a proposed amendment to chapter one fifty-three zoning, section one fifty-three point three-five-nine. And this is changes in plan by owner or developer to modify administrative approval requirements to allow additional projects eligible for administrative approval. This new language establishes consistency with current practices regarding administrative approvals for less than five hundred square feet by adding gross floor area to the appropriate sections. And with that, we had to sign up for this public hearing. No one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak specifically for this public hearing? Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing and open the floor for the board for discussion, discussion or questions. Does anyone have any questions for Greg or Meredith related to this? No?
No.
If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the proposed amendment for chapter one fifty-three zoning, section one fifty-three point three-five-nine, changes in plan by owner or developer to modify administrative approval requirements to allow additional projects eligible for administrative approval. I would also like to add that this, this proposed amendment on one fifty-three, three fifty-nine, et cetera, is consistent with all the comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows greater flexibility for projects to be reviewed and approved administratively.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And finally, under public hearings, this evening is our third public hearing. This is on proposed amendment to chapter one fifty-three zoning, section one fifty-three point zero-seven-six, off-street parking and loading. This is to modify parking for medical clinics to allow one parking space for two hundred square feet of gross floor area. The new parking calculations would be that once, one space for every two hundred square feet of gross floor area for medical offices with less than four thousand square feet. The second modification in this establishes a minimum of five parking spaces for medical offices. There was a sign up sheet for this public hearing, but that no one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing and open the floor for discussion. Questions to Greg or Meredith?
Greg, do you want to just explain it just a little bit more, and maybe a little bit easier to understand?
Thought the mayor did an excellent job.
I know.
Really what it boils down to is there was a request by a local business person to increase, to allow a little more flexibility in our zoning requirements. It currently is one to two hundred for up to three thousand square feet, and now it's going to be one to two hundred for up to four thousand square feet. And one to four hundred, I got this backwards, one to four hundred for up to four hundred, four thousand square feet. And anyway, that's right, one to two hundred, I had it right. And when, once you get over that threshold of four thousand square feet, then you would come back to the one to one-fifty requirement, and that seems to be reasonable with what the neighbors around us are using and experiencing in the parking requirements. So we, planning board recommended the approval and scheduled the public hearing, and hearing no opposition. I think it's a fine addition to our order.
Thanks, Greg.
Any questions? Okay, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment, one fifty-three dot zero-seven-six, off-street parking, loading, to modify the parking for medical clinics to allow one parking space per two hundred square feet of gross floor area. It is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it establishes a lower parking requirement that reduces the total impervious surface on a site.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. Next this evening, we will move into the time, this place is set aside. This is the first time that we've set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on anything they wish to bring to the board's attention, on, on any topic. We do ask that if you are going to speak at this public comment time, if you're speaking as an individual, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would please limit those comments to five minutes. When you do approach the podium there, which is where you would address us for public comment, if you'll please identify yourself by name and address. We did have a sign up sheet. We'll work from the sign up sheet first, and then if there's anyone in the audience that didn't sign up, that's fine, you'll have an opportunity, we'll call on you from the floor. First this evening, we had Mr. John Wilding that signed up to speak.
I would like to, to address the commissioners on the new Charter TV services provided to us as of March fourth, two thousand and fourteen. For seven years, I was getting the Hampton Road stations free without a cable box before March fourth. I was up to forty-nine channels, digital channels. About a week before the change, most of the Hampton Road stations were blocked for QAM tuners. On March fourth, I could only get two channels. Now they are blocked. In the past, for me, there would be no cable box, and I had my free HD. They're advertising free HD. I've got to rent a box now to get that. Okay, and if you notice that Charter says the reason for requiring the boxes is for interactive service. I don't want this service. I called and had the service removed. Basically, I'm going to say, if you have a rental place, you might want to check to see if your on-demand service has been turned off, because who knows who's going to buy something on demand. Charter took away my free HD so they could sell more services on all my TVs. Before March fourth, channel one and twenty-four ninety-nine did not work. Now they are active, and I asked for that to be removed. I asked if I could go to basic services. The Charter customer rep said, no, you can only get basic and basic expanded. In other words, if you're at basic and basic expanded, you want to revert to basic, you cannot do it. When the cable box is turned on, it always goes to channel one oh eight to talk about the upgrade. What is going to be the next controlled channel at turn-on are we going to get? Charter changed its service to digital-only, blocking all QAM channels, not just the extra tiers. You can get a free box for one year. After that one year, what's it going to cost? When it comes time for a new cable franchise in two thousand and sixteen, please remember March fourth, two thousand and fourteen, and how Charter changed its service that they provide so they could increase what we are now having to pay. It no longer is my choice to have a cable box or not to have a cable box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, there were no other signatures on the sign up sheet, but is there anyone on the floor in the audience that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Anyone that wishes to speak? Okay, then we will close public comment. It's not written on the agenda, but we typically have a response to public comment time right after the public comment. We have it written later on the agenda. John, I completely agree with your frustration. We have, we went to stand in line because we didn't do it early enough, and we've yet, we still have two of our TVs that we can't use right now because we didn't get our cable box early enough. So I personally share your frustration with that. And as you know, there's not a lot, certainly the town doesn't have any authority over any of this, but you do raise a point to remember in two thousand and sixteen, just to, yeah, keep this in the back of your mind, I guess. And if anyone else has any comments they want to share.
Yeah, if you could just remind us in two thousand and sixteen, so we don't forget.
It's a long time from two thousand and one, two thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even have cable service whatsoever, just, so I don't have these problems that you guys have. I don't even have any TV service, so that's what I would suggest.
I have a question. I don't know, does the town have any, any cable at all? Do we, do we have any? And I don't know how we work that. Were we receiving free cable at, at any point in time?
Yes, that was part of the franchising agreement, and that's currently being worked on.
I was going to say, because working for the county, I know we're, we're currently in flux as well, so that's also something I'm having a problem with, working at the bomb center. We, we, we had several televisions there that were free and are no longer working at all, so I have televisions that, that are just static right this moment. So we don't, we don't have any boxes, we don't have any cable service whatsoever until we get that worked out. And, and they're, they're looking to charge us at this point. We, we've gone from twenty-five years of free cable service to probably looking at, at paying a substantial amount if we want to continue this. So it, I, I personally and professionally sympathize greatly.
Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is introductions and presentations. Let me get my packet ready here. We have three students from First Flight High School. We have Ms. Carly Metcalf, Anastasia Ruff, and Mary Brogan that are here. They have selected for their civics class project to look at the bomb track and do a proposal for us, and so welcome, ladies.
Hi, I'm Anastasia Roddy, and this is Carly Metcalf, and Mary Brogan couldn't be here today, but she's in our group for the project.
She'll be here in spirit. All right, so this all started like with our project, but we wanted to do something because a couple months ago, I went to Parks and Rec during the winter. It was like right before Christmas break, and I was not allowed to, and all the gates were like locked up. The soccer cages were locked up, so we couldn't get on any of the fields, and that's, that was the whole point. We had a picnic, and we really just wanted to be able to go and do that, but we were not allowed to do it because they didn't want them to tear up the fields. So that's when we came up, so the civics project kind of just played into our idea. We were like, oh, this could totally work. We could have a proposal to make new fields, and that's where our bomb track, where the bomb tracks would come into play.
So then we came up with the idea for the multi-purpose fields that would be open year-round so that people could play in the off-season, because I know a lot of people want to practice, and they want to do things, and some people, I know, I play soccer, and I'll go all the way up to Virginia Beach sometimes because the fields down here will be closed.
And I play, I play volleyball, basketball, and softball, so I definitely get my sports in, and I, I really would enjoy to have something like this, especially an outdoor volleyball court, because I, there's nowhere to play volleyball except for in, in somewhere, and it'd be awesome to have something like this.
I'm really pressing down. Okay, so like we said, our goal is to have an operational field for year-round for everyone to come and they can play, and we would include volleyball, football, and soccer field, which would be the size of a football field, but we'd have goals on the side, soccer goals on the sides, so that people can move them onto the field like they have at the Nagshead Field, so that it's a multi-purpose field, and then we also have a batting cage. Originally, we were thinking of doing a baseball field, but.
We kind of figured out how, how expensive that was. It was kind of just like, wow, but there's a, we figured out later that you could also go on to, we have a couple fields that you can go on to, like in, you can go into the ones on Kitty Hawk, at Kitty Hawk Elementary School, those ones are always open. So that's where we came up with the idea for a batting cage, because we thought, wow, you can do just as much, and you can bring your own gloves, and then a batting cage would be just as well, because that's the problem is hitting straight balls, because if you're really good, then you can hit it really far. So that's where it comes into play.
The resources needed are basically like the basics of what you need to play the sport, which would be soccer goals, a volleyball net, a storage shed to put all the equipment in, and we were thinking to have the community involved, we could have the First Flight High School construction students that always, I always see, we always see them building the buildings. I don't exactly know exactly.
The bookshelves and stuff.
What the projects are, but outside my art class, they'd always, they would be building this huge house, it looks like, and we were thinking that we could have them as a project build the shed, the storage shed for it, so we'd only have to pay for the cost of materials, and it would have other people involved in it, and porta-potties, so people can stay there longer than just, you know, their need, and some benches, so that if people want to actually have a full-on scrimmage and game, they can sit, or parents can sit and watch their kids, the batting cage and a pitching machine.
So the long-term maintenance and the personnel required, so the things that we thought were going to be necessary were the annual fertilization and aeration of the fields, the mowing, and then to be able to have games, you have to have lines painted, and then as time goes on, things are going to get torn up, so then of course you have to have repairs, and then the ground maintenance, just to take care of the grasses and all those type of things.
So we figured we wouldn't need, it wouldn't be that costly to maintain it, since it's a year-round thing, we could hire, it would be hire one or two people to mow the field every week or so that needs to be mowed and take care of the field. The cost and payment, the estimated cost is about four thousand one hundred. We did a basic average of all the costs, so we, we researched all of the average, all the costs of each item, and we found the like average around amount of it, and then we added those together, but that's not including the materials of the shed, because I guess that varies in the type of shed and everything that we need. And then the cost for the upkeep would be the payment for the personnel, which would be average payment, I guess. And for how we could pay for it, I know at the last meeting, you, everyone talked about there's a Parks and Rec recreational fund, or there's recreational fund for, that was eighty thousand dollars, I believe, and that could be used, and if that can't, we can just have donation, donations, or we can fundraise or something, because four thousand one hundred, it's not that much money considering everything that I can do for the community and all of that.
Especially with like being in high school, you see what kind of things people do, and I think this would be one more thing that could, like, kids could be like, okay, let's go, and let's go play some volleyball, it would keep, or let's go throw the ball around. It would just keep them more occupied to keep them out of trouble, or more focused on their school, so that, or focused on their sport, so they can go and practice and get that much better.
And with the teams that want to use it, we thought to maintain some kind of revenue with it, we could have teams who wanted to use the field for a whole season, they could schedule times that they want so that they own those, the field for that much, and they pay a hundred dollar fee for the season. So there's just another field for teams to play on if they need it.
Okay, so the benefits we saw was it's the only sports field that is open year-round in Kill Devil Hills. It keeps adolescents, like I said, focused on their sports, and it keeps them more out of the trouble, so they can be more focused, and it gives another recreational activity to.
Because you always hear everyone here saying that, oh, there's nothing to do in the winter, there's nothing to do ever, it's just another thing to do.
And it can attract more people to the area to use the fields, and it could benefit the community as, as a whole, because I know like a lot of tourists come down here, and like they want to do something besides view the beach, just to give them something to do. It could just be like, oh, let's go play some ball, or just something entertaining.
Thank you for listening to us. That's the end.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
If you'll wait, wait right there, just in case anyone has any questions or comments for you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I, I've chaired the bomb track study committee, and we're, we have a contractor working on some ideas for it right now, and I'm going to contact the assistant town manager and discuss with him and see if maybe we can, this was not in the original proposal, but see if it can be fit in someplace, and maybe that the contractor can lay aside a little bit of land that maybe this could work.
Yeah, because I know you guys are talking about having that frisbee golf, and there's a lot of other proposals, but we worked out, it would basically, with the fields and the area around the fields, it would only take up five and a half acres, which isn't a lot compared to the forty-four acres that is there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll follow up on it for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for selecting our town for your civics project. It's nice to have you guys come present, so thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to old business. We have one item this evening under old business. This is the second reading and approval for Town Code, chapter one seventeen, curbside recycling franchise. Let's get my items in order here. Okay, Debbie?
Yes, ma'am. As you recall, February nineteenth meeting, the board did accept the proposal from Outer Banks Hauling, Bayside Disposal, for a fee of seven dollars and eighty-two cents per month, per cart. The ordinance is based on the provisions of the request for proposal that generated the response. Also, on that date, the board took the first action necessary to satisfy the requirements of the statute that the ordinance, the franchise ordinance be passed at two regular meetings of the council. So this, this evening would be the second reading to approve the curbside recycling franchise ordinance and to approve the franchising with Outer Banks Hauling.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, I know we discussed it quite a bit at the last meeting, so with that, a motion would be in order. I can make the motion. Are you ready? Okay?
I make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to approve the franchise agreement between the town of Kill Devil Hills and Bay Disposal Incorporated as presented, and further for the Board of Commissioners to approve the curbside recycling franchise ordinance as presented, both subject to approval by the town attorney.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move on to new business. We have several items this, this evening under new business. The first is item number one, the recommendation for acceptance of proposal for U.S. one fifty-eight sidewalk improvements and funding approval. And I see we have Pete here with us this evening.
We do.
Our town engineer. Pete, would you like to provide an introduction and overview, brief overview on this, please?
I recommend you accept them.
That's the briefest I've ever heard you, Pete.
It's out of character.
Thank you. And I appreciate you being back, as you, as you said you would, for this meeting with this. It was a quick turnaround time. So if anyone recalls, this is to fill in the goat path. These are the areas, the worn areas in between our sidewalks, and the, I remember reading it, and I highlighted it somewhere, the square footage, oh, four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven linear feet is how much this would cover. An RPC came in with the lowest bid, just over a hundred and one thousand dollars. Certainly with this, though, we would like to, to recommend a little bit of a contingency just in case. So any questions for Pete? Comments?
These bids came in lower than expected. A couple of them did, anyway, pretty low.
Just a brief recap. In round numbers, my engineer's estimate for the construction only, not the contingency and not our fee, was a hundred and thirty-three thousand. The second lowest bidder was one twenty-six rounded, and RPC was one oh two rounded. And we had thought the total project cost with contingency might be around a hundred and seventy thousand, but if we used all of the contingency, which we never do, we typically use a third and almost never more than a half of the contingency allowance you give us. So if you took the base bid of one oh two and our fee, would get you to one twenty-one, and then half the contingency, you'd still be south of a hundred and thirty thousand, which is, it's indicative of the good bidding climate that we remain in. it's indicative of the good bidding climate that we remain in. The spread among the bids was a, a little surprising, but two of them were below where our estimate was, and I always like to see that, so I don't have to do the work.
Well, I think this is great to see the, the traction that we've had, for those of you may have been out and have seen where the re- the improvements were made to, we had approved several meetings ago, um, to repair some of the damaged sidewalk, and now that there's been a few days of nice weather, we were out in a new, a couple of places in the, the north end of town, or, well, not north end, it's more middle, but north to where we live. Um, it was nice to see those repaired, and it looks great, so I think this is gonna go a long way, and, and just taking up, really trying to respond to what a number of citizens have been urging us to do, is to help with our sidewalk situation in, in Kittleville Hills.
And mayor, if I may, just in closing, uh, regarding the timeframe on this, uh, it will be seasoned soon enough, so the plan is, if your pleasure is to approve it tonight, that we'll have a pre-construction conference this Thursday afternoon. The first day of the contract time will be Monday, St. Patty's Day, and the date of required completion will be Friday, May sixteenth.
Wonderful.
So it'll be done before you know it.
Great schedule.
That is great.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments for Pete?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that we got this put together so quickly, so we can have it done before summer, thank you, Pete.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, um, a motion would be in order, um, as you can see, there's the motion, um, certainly you can say is presented, but it includes two items. Is there a motion from the floor?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from RPC, contracting for the one fifty-eight sidewalks in the amount of a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents, and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement for services, subject to approval by the town attorney, and to approve the budget amendment number twenty-nine for this construction project in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and five dollars and one cent, which includes the fifteen percent contingency.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks again, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under, uh, new business agenda item number two, we have si- two site plan reviews. Um, the first is two A, the Seven Seas condominiums. Um, if you recall, you recall, these were, um, I guess lost in a fire back in January of two thousand and thirteen. Um, and so this is for new construction replacement. Let's see, Debbie, actually, probably Greg. Greg or Debbie to?
Uh, this is a site plan for new construction replacement of the Seven Seas condominiums. Um, it's proposed nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square foot condominiums that will include fifteen two-bedroom units with thirty parking and associated site modifications. Um, all conditions have been addressed, and the staff would recommend approval as presented. The planning board did review it on February the eighteenth. And, um, here this evening is, um, former commissioner Jeff Shields. Who is, um, the property manager, if you have any questions.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
And I'll draw your attention too, in, in our packet, um, at the plant, when the planning board reviewed this on February eighteenth, there were four items that needed to be addressed. Um, and those have all been addressed, which is why now we are receiving it with a favorable recommendation from staff to approve this. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff? Any comments?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that during this whole process, I mean, obviously, this was a, a major event that happened, and, uh, we represent fifteen homeowners, um, for the Seven Seas. In fact, we have the president of the association here with us, Lisa Matthews, today. Um, but I just wanted to share, not only with you and the, and the board, but also Debbie, the process that we've gone through with the town of Kittleville Hills, we have literally probably met with every department in this town in regards to the rebuild. And, uh, I just wanted to share with you that, that you should be very proud, because they, they did nothing but find solutions for us all the way through this entire process, and, uh, um, you know, from the fire department all the way to the planning board, uh, planning staff have been, been great, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, just curious, when, um, assuming there's approval tonight, what's your timeline? Certainly I'm gonna be as aggressive as the sidewalks.
I mean, uh, realistically, we hope that, uh, that we can start probably sometime in early May.
Nice.
If we can, uh, you know, if every, if the stars align properly, that's, that, that's our game plan, and, uh, and we're hoping that, uh, that we'll be wrapped up in, you know, ten months, maybe, somewhere around there.
Okay, great, well, thank you. Okay, um, a motion would be in order on this.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, proposal for, uh, the site plan for Seven Seas condominiums at one fif- I'm sorry, fifteen thirteen North Virginia Dare Trail, in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone, proposed nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square foot, fifteen-unit condominium, parking and associated site modifications, as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you, we look forward to seeing construction. Okay, next on our, um, agenda under site plan review is item two B. This is the Bayside Body Group, or Body Shop Incorporated, at twelve oh-two Swan Street, in the Light Industrial Two Zone. This is for the proposed two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight square foot building addition, parking and associated site modifications. And Debbie?
Actually, I'm gonna defer to Greg, because I think there might be a little confusion, um, with this one, if, um, Greg, if you can explain the issue with the swells.
Sir, well, the mayor introduced the project, and it is, um, an addition to our, our friends at Bayside Body Shop, and in the Light Industrial Zone, and, um, they have corrected the, the one item, number one, that the planning board sort of pointed out, which is a setback issue, um, just a, a note of the plan. And the second issue was, um, was derived from, um, section of our ordinance that requires that, if you look at my memo, it's at the bottom of the, of page, I guess it's new business two, page two, that, that quotes the ordinance, and, um, at the time of discussion at the planning board, that wasn't brought to light. And this is because, and we go through a, a series of reviews, and Jeff Shields just talked about it a little bit, we had a tech one and a tech two review, and, uh, there was no swell on the plan, which is the, the issue here, the drainage swell, the small drainage swell on Martin Street. And then at, at the planning board, on that plan, the swell actually appeared. And then the planning board looked at it and said, well, maybe you'll need that swell, and voted that it be removed, and the plan you have doesn't have the swell. But yet, the ordinance, in, in my opinion, requires it, and that wasn't brought to light at the planning board meeting, but I'm bringing it to light and printing here for you to look at, and the attorney to look at, and if that says what I think it means, that, and the public services department has requested a swell, then the swell needs to be on the plan. And with that modification, staff would recommend approval. Did I totally make that unclear?
Well, no, I mean, well, I, I can only speak for myself, I was following that just through the correspondence we had in our, our packets. And we do have John Delicia here with.
And, and the owner, Brian Amista-Hoggin.
Okay. Okay, so, um, just for a little bit of clarification, then, the plan that the, the planning board reviewed at their meeting, did or did not have the swell? It had the swell.
It contained the swell.
But the planning board actually said they could remove, they suggested, was that what I said, removing the swell?
Right.
Okay, because they didn't know that we had an ordinance requiring a swell?
That wasn't discussed until after the meeting. That wasn't brought up as a point during the meeting.
That there was an existing stormwater management ordinance that would require the s- the swell, okay?
That's correct. It was on the plan.
Well, I guess what I'm under, what I'm trying to understand is why, and we have a couple, well, we have one planning board member, why it would have even come up to remove the swell if it was on the plan? Does any?
Well, there was, there was some discussion by, uh, Stan Cloud, he goes, was there, is there a stormwater problem here? And then I think John said, well, that's something I'd like to discuss, and then they discussed it, and then it got some traction with the board, that, uh, John's client didn't want to put the swell in, or John didn't want to put the swell in, um, and thought it was a responsibility of the municipality to put that swell in. And then we went and, and back and looked at our code after the meeting, and that was over in Denver. And we went and looked at the code after the meeting and said, well, it really is a good reason that he suggested that, it's in our code. And, you know, it, it's the same if you go out in front of a single, it's, it's different, but it's the same principle. If you go out in front of a single-family home, and you put your driveway in, you may have to dip the driveway, you may have to put a culvert pipe in, and grade the swell out, well, this is a bringing in a new lot into the, the site, the public services department, necessary to go out there and do improvements in this, in the, in the right of way. I guess somebody needs to do it, and the question is, is do you wanna use this ordinance to do it, or, and have the, the applicant do it, or does the town need to do it? It's pretty much, cause it's, it's something that we feel like is, is necessary for these public services, and, uh, as I think you said, it's probably, uh, uh, I think three or four inches higher, the, the, the grass on the side of the road is three or four inches higher than the road is in the center. So that makes the water all the way there, and the road instead of on the side of the road in the right of way.
And this is not something that we've just decided to pick on this business with, right? I mean, this is something that we, we've done with other businesses, and with, with other things that have been done before.
I think we've been pretty consistent after.
Okay, that's.
So, uh, yeah, if we did this, we might run the risk of s- maybe setting a precedent, and then other, in the future, we'd have to deal with it repeatedly, is that correct? Uh, possibly, I'm saying.
Well, we'd be making a decision that's contrary to an ordinance we have on the book. And that, that's the issue that I would have with it, is how do you do that? I mean, we have ordinances that we're supposed to.
Right, to, if, if we were not going to file an ordinance, you know, just don't file an ordinance, you make a change to an ordinance. My opinion.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree with you. That's why I was saying, we don't wanna do anything different, cause we don't wanna make it look like we can do that in the future.
Unless we, right, unless it was an ordinance that we didn't think was a good ordinance.
In which case you change it.
In which you change the ordinance.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and change it then, right?
Um, John? You have comments or questions or?
Oh, I've got, I've got several comments for you on that one. Number one, I think that ordinance has been taken out of context. I think you need to read the whole flood zone ordinance from the beginning to the end, to understand that last portion of it. That ordinance was put in place in order to, what Greg said, to make sure that existing drainage ways were not blocked, that culverts were put in at proper elevations, that drainage systems would continue to function when people develop lots, that's what it was there for. And, and if it, if, if it's necessary, and it makes good sense, then yes, I think that it does make sense for you to do that. However, in this situation, it's the top of the drainage basin. The swell that we're gonna get in there is only gonna be about that deep below the road, because of the way that their driveway is, their driveway has no culvert underneath it. You do not have a drainage system in this area for it to tie into, nor do you have a drainage system for it to block. You also have a very stabilized shoulder in that area with grass, you have water lines in that area that are buried, not very deep, and we have some other utilities in that area. So going in there and scraping off the grass is basically what you're asking the developer to do, and denuding it, only to have to restabilize it, for it not to really function in a drainage system. Um, even a, even a memo from, from your town engineer on February twelfth said, it would probably improve drainage, but linking it to the needed swell for the site is rather thin. So it really doesn't function, and we have a nice stable grassed area right there. I mean, if there was the need for the drainage system, or if you had a drainage system there that needed to be tied or improved to, I don't think the Hollins would have any problem with it, but it just doesn't seem necessary in this case, nor do I think the ordinance require it, I think the ordinance says if improvements are necessary, or if a drainage way needs to be, um, maintained, you don't have that here. So you don't have a problem. The site could never drain into that site, because our outfall is on Swan Street, at a much slower elevation than we could ever get the swell on Swan Street. So, you know, what you're asking is to denude the area, to put in something that really is not gonna function very well, and, and I, I'm, you know, and, and make somebody else pay for it, especially a business who is in town, is employing people, is paying taxes, wants to improve their business, you're just putting another burden on them, I think, and I really don't believe that that ordinance requires what Greg just said. That's one issue that we have with the site plan, there's two. The second one, hopefully, we will resolve that with the planning department in the future, has to do with your buffering ordinance, or your, no, not the buffering ordinance, the buffering ordinance is that with the fence that's all the way around the property.
Perimeter landscaping.
Perimeter landscaping in this location requires them to put all of their landscaping inside a six-and-a-half-foot-tall fence. And it's like thirty trees and fifty-seven shrubs that have to go inside. Um, now, the Hollins do wanna do some landscaping, they don't have a problem with that, but to have that type of perimeter landscaping required, and having to put it inside the fence, just doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. Now, we have talked with the planning department, and there has been talk about maybe modifying the ordinance before this building is completed. We surely don't wanna have to plant all those trees and bushes inside. We don't have a problem planting some trees and bushes along the outside, we're leaving all the trees that are on-site right now, we're not taking anything down. Um, so that's another issue I just wanted to bring to your attention. We're agreeing to them tonight, because I don't think we have a choice because of how your perimeter, but sometimes in the Light Industrial Zone, it just doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to require the perimeter landscaping, especially in lieu of them having a, 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 the buffer fence there. They have residential uses all around the site, so the fence is necessary. Um, but that's just something else I wanted to bring to your attention, um, with this plan tonight. And we're proposing them, but we would surely like not to have to put all those plants inside the fence.
Okay, let's, um, I'd like to hear from, um, since Pete stayed, I'm sorry to, but I do, would like your expert opinion on this. Um, the, first off, the memo, we're gonna go back, even though the, their items one and two, we're actually handling them in reverse. So item's number, item number one is what I'd like to address first. I'm sorry.
The setback.
It is actually out.
It's fine.
It is, but I would like to address, cause I think you guys were saying something about the trees and the fence, or I, I do wanna ask you to speak in a moment on that, but let, let me, if you don't mind, please, let's go to the, number two, where we're talking about removing the required drainage swell. Um, and first, I'll, I'll reference the same email that, that you referenced, John, um, for people that may not have this in front of them. Um, Pete actually stated the swell would improve drainage for the site, he did talk about any linkage of the need afterwards is rather thin. He also said that, you know, unless there's a clear language in the ordinance that enables us to require that, we can't, but he did say, he sta- he did state at the end of that email, if there's not one, we should have that ordinance in place, so that's why I do want you to kind of explain your, your opinion on, on this, cause I'm not an expert.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, um, I myself am not your best source of information as to what's in your ordinance, I've read it, I've worked under it, but I don't have it committed deeply to memory, and when I made the comments I did on the initial review, I hadn't scoured the ordinance looking for authority, uh, which is why I made it conditional. Certainly, if a, an improvement, if the need for an improvement is given rise to by the development, then there, there never would have been any question, John certainly would, would agree with that. And I agree with him that the on-site, or the, the improvements that are being made to the body shop and the property, don't directly give rise to the need. It's not the fact that they're putting more impervious cover that causes this swell to be desirable. It isn't anything they're doing that causes it to be desirable, and that was the key point. What Public Services said, and what I agreed with, is that, and, and not, don't completely agree with John on, is that every, you know, there are many parts to a stormwater system. There's the big forty-eight-inch pipes, or thirty-foot-wide ditches at the downstream end, but there are the little capillaries up at the upstream end, you know, where very little water is being carried, but some is. In this particular case, water falls out of the sky onto Martin Street, and goes over towards the edge of pavement, and what we would want it to do is get off the pavement into a swell, and soak into the ground. As it is now, over time, the shoulder or area beyond the edge of pavement has built up. So now the water sort of ponds up at the edge of pavement, not for too terribly long on ordinary rains, but it's kind of se- uh, seeping its way ed- but it's kind of seeping its way edgewise into that almost grass curb sort of a thing. We'd rather it get off the pavement immediately during the rain, and have a little bit of a low place, and soak in there. And every time you look at one of the new projects that we've designed, and most of our good design ideas, we stole from our predecessor, Mr. DeLucia, getting water off the pavement and into roadside shallow swales, that's just what we think works best around here. That's what our standard is, when we can get it. The question is, is it a reasonable thing to ask of a site developer who isn't directly contributing to the need for it? He could be dumping water into it, which we don't allow. He could be changing the grade or blocking it with his entrance or culvert, which he isn't doing in this case. So he's not directly causing the need for it, but it is a better way for things to drain. So is the cost to these folks, plus the fact that that roadside area will be denuded, to use John's word, and will need to reestablish vegetation over a period of no doubt several months, are those costs, in terms of money, and in terms of being without grass cover for a little while, reasonable? And are they requireable? Are they reasonable? I think they are. If we could abracadabra and have that condition everywhere in town, even right at the top of a system, right where it water breaks and goes one way or the other, I'd want it on every single road in town if I could get it. It's not going to make a road fail in ten years if you don't have it, and in the last thirty years if you do. But it's the little incremental differences that matter sometimes, and this is one of those situations. So the question was not whether it's worthy or not. It's worthy, it has value. It isn't critical, that would be a mischaracterization on our part. It's not something that where the world's going to come to an end if it doesn't happen. But it's good practice, and my point was, if there's authority to require it, then let's require it. If not, then you got to decide whether or not you can ask for it and just fold your cards if they say no. But it turned out, upon further inspection, it was realized that this ordinance does exist. And I don't know what the authors of that ordinance meant, John may know better than I do, but I've listened to enough lawyers say resipso locatur, which is Latin for the thing speaks for itself. And that seems to be saying that if the Public Works Division of Public Services says it ought to happen, then it ought to be done. But I leave that to Mr. Michael. Does that help at all?
Yes, it does, and best. That was going to be my next thing, if you guys are okay, is to turn to Steve. Because it seems like, really, whether you want to debate whether it's a good thing or not, is really not the point. But I appreciate hearing what you're saying. It really is going to come down to, if this is codified, we need to make our decision according to the code, because that's the legal authority that we have, and that's how we have to operate. So the next, next person that we should defer to comment to should be the attorney to provide us guidance to whether we're making a decision within code or without code.
Well, first thing I'll point out to you, is the ordinance says it shall be required to provide. And so that's a mandatory direction that's in the ordinance. The problem is, and I'll agree with John, there is some clumsy language in here, because it says, it uses the term, approved by the Public Services Department. It doesn't say required, and it should say required. And it doesn't say that, but historically, you have interpreted that to mean required. And with the mandatory language in the beginning of the ordinance, I would say that the requirements are probably mandatory, and probably that would be an interpretation that could be made.
Okay. Do you have questions for what Steve was sharing?
Are we allowed to make an exception and let this pass? I mean, has it, I think Travis saw it recently, when there was a lot of water.
Yeah, I paid a visit to the site and to meet with Brian, and during some of the heavy rain, and drove around the entire perimeter. There was no standing water on that side of the street. There was on the other side, there's Mobile Home at Sixth and Martin on the, on the north side. Standing water there and at several driveways, as you get closer to the bypass near JK's and that area, but none directly on the perimeter of the Bayside properties.
I don't think that anything in the code would indicate that this is something that could be done on a case-by-case basis by observation during a, any kind of a rain event. I think as Steve has stated, and as I read it, it's the code, and we don't have, I wouldn't feel comfortable accepting the authority to approve it without following the code, when I get into that.
When you say, is there a chance to make exceptions? I mean, there's always a chance, but it's, are you doing, are you adhering to a code or not? I mean, it's.
Now, we have the ability to change this code. And I mean, if staff thinks this is what we need to do, we have the ability to start going through that process. But that takes, that takes a little while. We can't necessarily do that tonight. Correct?
Well, you also have the ability to say that Public Services was wrong. So you can pretty much do what you want, if that's the route.
I'm not going to do that.
Was wrong in their interpretation that this was needed, that a swale is needed?
I mean, folks, we're only talking about something that's going to be this deep. And all it's going to do is take all the grass off the right of way. I mean, the Hollins don't have a problem with the drainage system being put there. They don't have a problem if there's a deep ditch through there and it ties into a drainage system. But the point is, why should they be required to put something in that is not there, is not planned, is not necessary, and is costly for them? And I do think that you have the ability, like Steve said, because it's not, there's not a drainage system there for the Public Works Director to approve us doing a modification to. You know, and all you're doing is adding costs to business people that want to develop and want to start things and get things, keep them going in town. And that happens over and over again in this town, unfortunately. And a lot of people won't come to develop because of some of these requirements. You know, it's unfortunate.
Hopefully, they have experiences like the person on the agenda before you. And certainly, I'll tell you, our, my position is not to try to make anything tougher on you all as business owners. It truly is to operate within what I think is my legal jurisdiction within codes. You know, if we were to think this is not the right code, then I would make, based my decision differently. I do think you open a very gray area and you leave yourselves very vulnerable as a town if you start cherry picking when you would enforce and when you wouldn't enforce. Not everyone will always do what the right thing. And unfortunately, that's why there needs to be consistency in what we're enforcing, or go down the path to change a code, or to change one of our ordinances. But I would say, I mean, at this point, there's still, anyone can either make a motion, or can add further into discussion. Is there anything that you all would like to add as the property owners or business owners?
John hasn't had it already. We just really, we maintain this grassy area, it's been there forever, everybody knows that. We've briefly made some big improvements to the core of Martin's Swan Street, for recovery, you know, we made a lot of points, just the fact that it's been destroyed and all that. We feel like there is probably see how stormwater had on Sixth Street and Swan Street, it's going to help Swan Street as a whole. It doesn't really make sense to us, we're not opposed to doing it. We've been, we've processed before, we, we're like the towns, we hopefully will be up in the town, but we don't see it being lost. Unless there was some other form of treatment, we'd be happy to be involved in our property for a living.
So even if they build the swell, there's still nowhere for the water to drain, it's just going to sit there?
Steve, do you, I mean, Pete, do you want to explain again what you were describing?
What was contemplated was, and it is at the minimal end of what you would call a swale. It could be done with a grade all, or a front-end loader bucket, or something essentially running the blade along the edge of pavement, bringing the grass down to where it's flush with the edge of pavement at the pavement. And about four feet over, it's maybe, just as John said, four, six inches deep at most. And then it ties back up. So you've got this four-foot wide strip, and the outer edge of it away from the pavement would have a slight positive grade. It would not be dammed up or hemmed up and go nowhere. It would, in fact, its grade would match grade with the flow line of their Martin Street entrance, and then continue on in that direction. So it would go somewhere. Now, again, I don't want to overblow this. I don't, I think you ought to do it, but I don't want to overdramatize it. It's a very little bit of water, because as John rightly said, it's at the high end of the system. It's, he would say it isn't even in the system, the system starts further downstream. I'm just saying, it's like the Nile River has someplace where it's, you know, a little water fountain trickle, if you follow it far enough upstream. This is at the upstream end of it. It's, that grass has probably slowly built up over time. Just good road maintenance, one of the things that the DOT will do from time to time, and you've seen it done, they'll come along and do what they call clipping the shoulders. Because if you don't, now, it's more true in clay soils than the sandy soils we're blessed with here, but if you let your shoulders build up and don't clip them down, water will begin to lay up next to that shoulder, and in some storms, work its way out on the pavement a little bit, and maybe even cause a hydroplanning thing. That's no factor here. Nobody's going fast enough to where that's an issue at all. But water is the enemy of pavement, so we want to get it in the ground as quick as we can. I'm gratified to hear that there isn't any observed drainage problem here. But still, the simple solution is to have a condition where any water on any pavement in town has a positive grade off the pavement. That's, it could be that simple. You could do that and throw some seed down and come back in six months and the grass would be starting to reestablish. In two or three years, you wouldn't even know it had happened. I say all that to stress what a minimal improvement this is. And my recommendation would be, if it was your pleasure to dispense with it, I'd have services do it if the applicant doesn't do it. It's just that minor a thing to do, but it's, in my opinion, it's kind of the right thing to do.
Since you said that, let me ask a question. In the overall scope of things, what, and maybe this is not a proper question, but cost-wise, what are we talking about here? I mean, percentage, just give me a, and I know I'm asking you to ballpark this, but in a percentage-wise overall, if you're looking at the cost of the project, of what they're looking at, and what this is, is it, are we asking them to do twenty percent of what the cost of their project is, or ten percent of the cost of their project? Or how much is this going to cost them?
I would guess it would be on the order of a few hundred dollars, given that there are going to be construction equipment on the site anyway. If you were doing it with nothing else being done, it would be more. And a total stab at this would be probably five hundred dollars worth of work. And I would guess that might be, I don't know, two, three, five percent of their total dollar cost. You know, John may be able to peg that better than I can, because he knows their improvements better than I do. One last quick point. In the ordinance, as I look at it, it doesn't say all sites shall have roadside swales. It's not an ordinance that mandates that you have roadside swales. It mandates that you do what the Public Services Department thinks is appropriate, which, as your attorney said, is kind of an interesting way to write an ordinance. You probably do need to update this, this and many other aspects of your ordinances someday. But I would respectfully disagree with my colleague about the stringency of your ordinances. I make a living practicing about seventy-five miles north of here, and if I could do all my practice here, I would consider that I have passed and gone to heaven. Thank you.
We don't want you to pass.
Well, I mean, there's a number of options before us. So some that are going through my mind are, you know, we work on the ordinance. You can not take action because, or we, I don't know, can we not take action on this tonight if we wanted to? I'm thinking, well, for example, the planning board. The planning board made a decision and provided a recommendation to us without having this ordinance to review. And so they haven't weighed into this at all, whether or not this ordinance is right, whether the decision of the Public Works, Public Services Department was the correct one or not. So that is, is that within our authority to send that back as a recommendation?
I think the reason that the planning board didn't discuss is, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, I wasn't at the meeting, but they didn't discuss whether the ordinance was right or wrong, because the swale was on the site plan that they were reviewing.
It was theirs.
They didn't, they didn't discuss the ordinance one way or the other.
Right.
They didn't know about the ordinance, that wasn't brought up and discussed at the plan.
Right, but they approved removing the swale.
Something that.
Because they didn't have the ordinance to then say, well, no, you can't. I mean, I feel like they may have not, had they made, had they done what they did to remove it, knowing the ordinance, then we probably would have had some comments from them on, well, was that because you disagreed with Public Works? Or because you didn't think the ordinance, that was the intent of the ordinance, you know what I mean? Like, they didn't make that decision in context of our code.
I think that's fair to say. I mean, that was going through their minds, but nobody brought the ordinance up.
And so I guess what I'm saying is, from our seat tonight, I mean, that could be one option. There could be the option of approving it and requiring the swale to go back on. There could be the option of approving it and not requiring the swale. I mean, there's, I guess that's what I'm throwing out there, is there's several ways to address this. I will tell you my, where I am, because I'm by kind of ordinances, and I feel that that's our statutory requirement. My purview is either to send it back to the planning board, or to approve it where we require the swale, because then I think we are within, we will have, if we send it back to planning board, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we are not acting against a code that's in existence and gives more time to study that. Otherwise, we require the swale also because we are within our, within our code. That's my opinion, and I'm one of five members. Yes.
We would prefer not going back to the planning board, because that'll, that'll take two more months of time, and these folks are going to start a building.
Yeah, that's.
I was wondering that as well.
I was just trying to throw out options, but I respect that if that's. Okay, so I, what do you guys, what's, what would you like to do?
I don't know, anyway, I'm, we're not going to do that, but I don't know, sending it back to the planning board would be doing any good or not, because it's in the code, and they don't have, they don't have the authority to change that.
No, it's just a matter of, would they make, would they be looking at this? And we have a couple of folks on the planning board in development, or that's their line of work, that may be looking at the decision of the Public Services Department on whether to make, because right now, the way our code is written, that's where it's a little bit gray, is that we're taking the approved plan, what Public Service Department is recommending, and that's what we're adhering to, that part of this. That's why I was thinking.
I think unless we go in and, unless we have the planning staff rewrite this and make it a little more clear, as it was stated, that the way it's written, there could have been a different word used, but we, that's how, historically, how we've interpreted it. And I think we should be held to that standard now until the code is changed. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I accept the same thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, oh, okay. A different way. And we're talking, I mean, I don't know why it's such a big deal. Personally, it's like, I think I talked to Steve in Public Works, and as Pete has just stated, we're talking about a project here that's in hundreds of dollars. And not that I want to cause the business to spend any more money, but it could just be done at this point, and then go back and look at the code.
Who would do the job? Who would be responsible for paying for it?
Business. That's the way it's written, so.
Yeah, if a new business was to come in to play, if a new business was to apply for permits tomorrow, they would be required to do this, correct?
That's, that's the way it's been in the past.
Well, the conversations that I'd had with Brian, I was on the side of not requiring it. However, we're kind of in a little different position at this point, unfortunately, with there now being an ordinance. I wouldn't, I'm glad y'all are in agreement with potentially not sending it back anywhere, so that you can get. so that you can get started on the improvements. I want to make sure that we're not in a, a hindrance to development. And, but at the same time, we obviously need to follow our own ordinances. Yes.
Um, this particular issue, it's not the five hundred dollars, it's a mess.
It's, I'm sorry?
It's a mess.
Okay.
It's going to be for the three months or three years. It takes to reestablish our right of ways. I realize the right of ways are town property, but it is the front view of our business. And we just worked very hard in the years to clean up that business as we met with town engineer. Um, yes, it kind of showed a little history of what we've done to try to make this a, a better place for the town and the residents. So it's, it's not the five hundred dollars, it's not money at all. It's just the fact that we just, we hate to see that. To rip up, we have a lot, a lot of recovery area that only entered the cloud and we have been working hard for years to help make it look better. So I just want to make sure, like I first, everybody keeps mentioning how much.
Yeah.
And Pete, if he writes, not going to respond. To be quite honest with you, my contractor's actually pulling in, he's already inside. It's just we hate to see that mess.
All right, I didn't mean to minimize the, the project. I just, yeah.
I just want to make sure we're really.
Yeah.
We're not going to get a five hundred bucks here.
Right, I understand, yeah. Um, and you guys have done a good job there with that business. So you know, I, you know, I, I met with you before about a couple of things. And it doesn't always go, uh, you know, maybe the way you hope it goes. And I honestly, at this point, uh, we've discussed it for quite a while and I, I don't see any way around requiring that at this point. And if the devi- if the, uh, business is willing to wait and see and have the code changed, that's one thing. But I'm sure they're not, so. Uh, like, the best thing to do right now, in my opinion, if the board would agree, would be to move forward with it and, uh, require the drainage swell to be put in.
Is it for the entire distance of, of both, both your lots from six to?
Nine hundred feet.
Pete, are you all over there reviewing that site? Is that what you're, because? Well, I'm really good at putting people on the spot on it. Um, well, just because Commissioner Appleman was asking a question and, and, and John just responded nine hundred feet. But were you looking at what the impact is as far as what the, um, business owner's concerns are with?
The swell that we were talking about was just from the Swan Martin corner, along Martin down to the entrance. I didn't bring my scale with me because I didn't know this was coming up. But it looks like maybe a hundred twenty feet. And, you know, I, I don't remember exactly what's in that strip. But just the first four, and if we want to compromise a little bit, we could make it three feet. You know, just the outermost three feet and dig it an inch and a half deeper and get a pallet of saw and drop it down if you want it to not have to wait for any months. Well, now you're going to pit us against one another. I see how you are. Where are we, Tony? Where, where did you guys want the swell? Good strategy though. Madam Mayor.
That's okay. Well, y'all are looking at that. I do, we do have one planning board member here tonight, um, James Almody. Do you have anything you want to add?
I can use some history about what transpired after the meeting and the mindset that was going with the planning board.
Does anyone, want any of, want that information? Okay, do you mind though, because I know John's probably rolling his eyes at me coming to the podium. While you guys are discussing this, James Almody from the planning board is going to provide a little bit of information from that meeting. And then, um, yeah. But I think this is important information, what they're looking at while you're speaking. So we know how much disturbance that we're, that we're talking about. Okay, thank you.
Well, the, the planning board was originally told that, uh, this particular aspect, uh, the, the, uh, the owners of the property and the engineer didn't want to do. You know, they weren't interested in that swell whatsoever. When the plan got to us at the planning board, lo and behold, the swell was on the plan, which we were all a bit surprised about after hearing that they weren't interested in doing it. Uh, then there was some talk with the planning board members, um, uh, asking the engineer, well, you know, we see these, these bullet points that we have, uh, about what you're not, or what you were going to do or not going to do. And one of them happened to be the swell. We noticed that that's on the plan, so are you okay with that now? Then, uh, the en- John said, well, to be perfectly honest with you, we're not okay with that. So then there was some discussion about, you know, we brought up the, uh, the town engineer's memo. And of course, we do have some people on the planning board that are involved in this type of thing. And the, the opinion was then that because of what the town's engineer said and some of the developers with what their ideas were, that it looked like something that we couldn't. And we had some discussion with the planning board, uh, the, the, um, the planning department about, you know, I don't think it was ever clear that I, that the ordinance stated that they, they had to do that. We were all going by what the town engineer said where, you know, it doesn't look like maybe they're required to do that, but it looks like something that, you know, we might want to add to, to our ordinances in the future. So that's why it, you know, it's not like we, that, that the planning board totally disregarded, you know, what had transpired with it being on there and then just took it off. It was the idea that we were, uh, under the assumption that, you know, our ordinance was kind of gray. And because of that fact, that the, and they weren't interested in doing it, uh, we, we kind of felt like we would pass it on with, with our approval without that on there. But then as the, um, your board could decide one way or the other, uh, whether, how that ordinance read. So that's kind of like the history of what they.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Pete, did you guys have a meeting of the minds back there?
First, I'd like to apologize for contributing to the degeneration of your fine meeting into an engineering work session.
No, you know what? I think this is a great example of really good productive government in action. So those of you who do think this is long and drawn out, I entrust, we're going to get to a resolution soon. And I appreciate everyone hanging in there because I do think this is great living government. So please, go ahead.
Part of this, I think, may have been a miscommunication. Um, and maybe I get my left and my right confused or something. But somehow or another, Mr. Delucia thought that we were, that my comment had to do with downstream of the Martin Street entrance or east. I, I was agreeing with services and the only area where we don't have anything, and we're both services and town engineer in agreement, for clipping the shoulder for a distance of three or four feet. We can make it three if we like. From the end of the curb return at the Sixth Martin intersection down to the existing entrance. Done. About a hundred and twenty feet long by three or maybe four feet wide to whatever, just a little bit at or below the plane of the pavement so that the water will run off the pavement and not lay up against the pavement. I think Mr. Delucia now understanding this is what we were all asking for, is probably okay with it. And if it is, uh, maybe it's a victory.
Okay.
If, if we change it to, from, reduce it from four to three, does that impact still your existing plantings? Or?
I think that'll work. We, we have to make, we have to look at it. Commissioner Appleman, um, you know, to make sure that transitions in back. But, but, you know, scraping down the shoulders like the DOT does, similar, similar to what we see on the highway, would be acceptable rather than having to put a swell in the middle of, of that area. The water line is very close to the edge of the pavement there too. I don't want to, you know, we don't want to uncover too much of that. But talking with the developers, I think that's acceptable resolution to this.
Good. Okay, that's great. Thank you all for having your meeting in the back and. Okay, so where we are back to this site plan approval. Um, was there anything else there that we needed to address with respect to the, the question about the planning within the fence? I know, I know we came to this meeting saying we're okay. I mean, well, we're somewhat okay. But we had an agreement, but I know when John was referencing that, I think there was, um, were you guys in agreement or was there some discussion that we need on that item before we move for a motion? Is there any?
Would you like me to discuss, discuss the landscape? I'm trying to find the plan.
Well, I just want, you know, we've spent this much time. So if there's anything unresolved, I would like it to be resolved if at all possible.
I think it's got to be that one right, is that one right there?
Okay, we have a big picture of that.
Yeah, it's not too good. Um, what, the landscaping issue is the cause of the placement of the fence. And, um, this is somewhat of a different situation than normal because Mr. Holland's business, he's trying to keep people out. He, he's got a security issue. And, um, you know, his fence is currently located along the property line. And if, in order for him to put his landscaping in at this point, it would, you know, then, then he can't put it in the right of way. So it goes on the, on, on the inside, which our ordinance doesn't. Another ordinance that needs work, I mean, you've worked with these ordinances for, uh, twenty, twenty-five years and, and I don't think anybody's ever questioned me about doing a stormwater in, in the right of way. Nobody's ever even brought it up, so it wasn't a big, it wasn't a big deal. And then you have to go back and read your ordinance and somebody says they don't want to do it. And it turns out to be a confusion after all that. So, okay, landscaping. Uh, you have a buffer requirement against incompatible uses, which there's houses on two sides of this. And then you have a perimeter landscaping requirement. And they're both in the ordinance. And when you put your fence up on the, on the right of way, right on the edge of the right of way, maybe it's an inch or two off, but that's typically the way people do. That doesn't leave any room on the, the outside of the fence for your neighbor to have any, any perimeter landscaping. So the question is, is what John was talking about and, and Brian and Lisa in our, in our meeting is, do you need to have, uh, perimeter landscaping and the buffer? And, you know, I explained to them, we were looking at the landscaping ordinance and I think we might be looking at storm, uh, stormwater management after this too. But, um, and, and trying to make some changes to that ordinance. And there's other areas that need changes and work, and we think this one does as well. And the question is, once it goes to the legislative process, is somebody going to show up at a public hearing like tonight or, or possibly, um, you know, at the planning board meeting and say, well, you know, I really want to have those bushes outside that fence. The fence I need, but I also need the bushes. So I don't know how it's going to go, but we're, we're going to work on, on that particular section of the ordinance. And, um, and take it to the planning board and see, and see what they, what they, what they think about it. And, and there's other sections of the ordinance that need work as well. But that's, i- if the fence wasn't there, or if you moved the fence back, you know, several feet, then possibly you could put the landscaping on the outside of it. It depends on the site. And the site's not designed to do that right now. So it does complicate it, you know, in this, in this particular case. Can you put the bushes on the inside and meet the ordinance? Yes, technically. Does that help anybody? Not at all. Unless you want to look at the inside of it. Oh, let's look at the landscape from the inside of the fence. And that's not what people, that's not what the ordinance is about anyway.
Right.
But, yeah, but it, it, that's not a, that's, that.
Right, it's not an issue because the plan's right. It's just basically John bringing to our attention, which he already brought it to yours. But now it's been brought to our attention that we do need to look at this ordinance. It's on yours. We're going to start that traction. It doesn't help you unfortunately because the ordinance is in place and that's what we have to make a decision based on. But at least it will, now it, um, has us start looking at that for, for the future. So, because it doesn't do any good for you now, but, um.
We do intend to put bushes outside the fence for our neighbors.
Insistent with the other.
Yes, with what we already have, just not on the inside that.
And they, they've done a fine job, uh, with taking what they've taken.
Absolutely.
Really made it look a lot better and, and they're, they're a good business for ha- having in the community. And, and trying to figure out ways to work with the ordinance. There just isn't any way there. It's got to be changed.
Right.
It doesn't make sense in this case.
Okay, all right. So with all of that, a motion, we are now to the stage, a motion would be in order on the site plan.
What's the motion?
Um, well, I would say that, um, the motion would be to approve, and I'm thinking too, we're approving the site plan, um, with, um, and it would include the, um, drainage swell as agreed upon at the meeting with the Public Works Director. Their Assistant Director. So that way there's no, you know, whatever was questionable before, there's been an agreement now. And so now we're very clear what's required.
We will put a detail on the player to share that. Is that a motion?
Is that clear enough for everyone as a motion? If so, then yes, I can make a motion as well. So that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all for your patience and thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And if, um, if I may, um, with that, the, the board is requesting that the planning department review that ordinance for review by the planning board.
Yes, please.
The landscaping?
And the landscaping.
And, well, I think they are working on the landscaping.
I think they're already in the works with the landscaping.
But, but yes, both.
Okay, great. Okay, let's keep moving, um, on to agenda item number three A. Well, three, um, this is, item number three is just to schedule two public hearings. Um, or for our consideration to schedule two public hearings. The first is three A, um, a proposed amendment to chapter one fifty-three point zero seven seven signs to add regulation for decorative flags at commercial structures. And the second public hearing, it was item number B that we are to consider scheduling, is to section one fifty-three point zero zero two definitions and section one fifty-three point zero five three B two B zoning nonconformity to correct definition of alteration structural and delete duplicated definition as listed and add structural alterations to zoning nonconformity. Um, we can take these individually, which is fine, and, or we can take them together. Whatever the pleasure is of the board.
And this is just to schedule?
This is to schedule the, the public hearings. And what we would be looking at if we're taking these together is to schedule them both for the April twenty-third. If you recall, our next meeting, which is our first meeting in April, is a public forum. So this would be for the April twenty-third meeting at five thirty.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, schedule public hearings for, uh, new, new business items three A and B on, uh, at five thirty on Wednesday, the twenty-third, two thousand fourteen.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public hearings are scheduled. Great. All right, Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Nidget.
I don't have anything today.
Thank you. Commissioner Appleman?
Um, our police department has made the news on, uh, being able to do some really good detective work and, and legwork and getting the, that case settled this week. With the, the abuse case. And I just wanted to say good job. That was a really good job. That was all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rivas?
Don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
You approach Tim Hogan?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's agenda. I have several items this evening. The first item, which is in your packet, is a proclamation declaring April two thousand and fourteen as Child Abuse, Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Killable Hills. Um, there's a proclamation attached in your packet. Um, and this is an event, or throughout the month of April, the Children Youth Partnership and the Dare County Department of Social Services will be collaborating to have, um, kind of a month-long prevention and awareness campaign. You may recall in previous years, and I'm not sure if that's still the intention, but they have in previous years, um, placed cutouts of children. Um, they've used our lot across from Harris Teeter, bless you, as one of the sites where they place the cutouts, um, they're brightly colored cutouts of children. Um, even though it, it's eye catching, it's really disturbing if you know the meaning of that. Each one of those children represents a substantiated case of child abuse and/or neglect in our county. So it'd be nice if we didn't see any children out there this year if they are, um, doing that promotion. But certainly, um, I think this is a worthwhile proclamation to declare. So, um, with that, a motion would be in order to, or I'll make the motion to adopt the proclamation declaring April two thousand and fourteen as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Killable Hills.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, also in your packet this evening, um, also under Mayor's agenda, item number two. mayor's agenda, item number two, um, the Community Appearance Commission, and we do have the chairwoman here, um, Ms. Sue Kelly this evening, uh, but a recommendation has come forth from the Community Appearance Commission to us, um, to look at defining outdoor storage and outdoor display. Um, we do have a cup, we do have a couple of business owners on the Community Appearance Commission who are in support of the town, looking at, um, and knowing that this is a, a pretty monumental task to look at this. One of the, um, business owners who recommends that town looks at this, um, actually has a lot of, of their business is Ocean Atlantic Rental. So, I mean, this would certainly affect them greatly. Um, but it's nice to have their, uh, opinion and, and guidance on this. But where the Community Appearance Commission, what they are asking is that the Board of Commissioners send this to the planning board, for the planning board to then work with staff on looking at, um, defining outdoor storage and outdoor display. So that's what's before us tonight is, do we support sending that on to the planning board to look at? And as I mentioned, Sue's here. If you all have any questions, um, or want to ask her about that, obviously she's in supportive, in support of this as the chair, um, in asking us to consider this. So, any comments? Um, any willingness to send this to the planning board?
Oh, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely agree that we should, we should have it looked at. It's been looked at often on for a good many years. And, um, it would be nice if we could come to some kind of resolution on it at this point. Because I know when I was on the planning board for, I guess, seven or eight years maybe, uh, we probably discussed it three times and it went to the Board of Commissioners on several occasions. And, um, uh, obviously there wasn't any resolution to it. That's why we're going to be looking at it again. And I hope this time we can, um, come up with something that will be agreeable to everybody.
Well, knowing that this is a, a significant topic to tackle, um, one of the suggestions then is to actually see if the Community Appearance Committee, you may have read that in the memo here, and the planning board would host a joint, um, work session. So basically a joint meeting. So all of the meetings of the minds can come together and discuss this. Kind of is the first introduction back into the planning board. So it's something that they would need to coordinate the meeting between those two, the board and the committee. Um, and at our direction, we can certainly ask them to do that. And that's what I would recommend that we do.
Yeah, maybe notify all the businesses so they can have their input as well.
Um, well, certainly, you know, we have the public forum coming up on April tenth, and we could encourage business owners to come to that meeting and tell us what they think about this. I think, um, it's a great time for them to do that. But the, the planning session, the work session, it'd be an open meeting so anyone could come. But the, the actual work session would be between the members of the, the Community Appearance Commission and the planning board. But any, any business owner that would come on April tenth and feed information to us, certainly we would want to give that input to those two entities when they do meet. It's likely that that meeting won't happen before the public forum. So, did you guys have anything you wanted to add or share or?
But it's just the first step, Adam Mayor, that trying to create a definition for outdoor display and outdoor storage. And, uh, that seems to be, we never could get off square one because the, the two were confused and they're somewhat different. And if you, if you can get people to buy into there is a difference, then maybe we can move forward or choose not to.
So basically looking at taking this in very small steps. Instead of looking at trying to tackle this whole creating restrictions or modifying that, it's first define it. And then maybe once it's defined, um, once it's defined, if, if we can come up with two distinct definitions, then the next step would be looking at, um, modifications or putting, codifying other things around that. Yeah. So baby steps because we know it's, it is a significant thing. So April seventh is our, um, open public forum. So.
April seventh or tenth?
Is it?
April seventh. It's a, a Monday.
Okay.
It's the first Monday in April.
Okay. So is there, um, consensus that we can send this to the planning board and then encourage the planning board to have a, um, joint session with the Community Appearance to talk about this? Do I have consensus for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll move on to, um, item number B. This also is from the Community Appearance Commission. Um, and this is about mowing along US one fifty-eight. Back in August, the Community Appearance Commission brought a request to the Board of Commissioners, um, to consider funding, um, additional cuttings. That's the correct word. Mowings is probably a better word. Um, for August and September of two thousand and thirteen. That, um, was not approved, the funding of that. And what the board, what the Community Appearance Commission is coming with now is, instead of, which is what happened, we were trying to figure out, okay, that's not part of our budget. How do we, how would we allocate money to pay for that? They're asking for us to consider this during our budget process. So it's not an add-in later. Um, and basically it's, this, I know staff did a lot of work before on coming up with some estimates on that. And so it's right now trying to give direction is what we, what we're looking for, what the Community Appearance is looking for. Um, can we give staff direction now to look at including that mowing, um, when they're preparing the budget for us?
Mowing from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
I think that'll be determined, won't it? Probably. I mean, there's, the state does it. Was it three times?
Five times.
Five times a year. And it doesn't, um, look, there's pretty good space between that. And we originally talked about interspacing our mowings between those. And they start when? May? April or something?
When ever.
Soon, yeah.
The contractor that they were looking at is the same one who does the mine for DOT. So it would coordinate well because they would know when they were here.
And they also included picking up the trash before they mow.
Picking up the trash before they mow is part of our contract.
But Commissioner Midge, is your question, your question is more on this is seasonal mowing, not all year round mowing.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And the answer to that is correct. Yes. Yeah, we are only looking at that and the cost involved with that. Um, so I guess what staff would need is just, is there consensus from us at this point to have them to please look at including this in the, um, budget that's going to be presented to us?
I'd say go ahead and do it personally. Yeah.
I'm okay with it if we're looking at it like that. If, if we're looking, if they're, if they're contracting and we're looking at contracting with the same contractors, I'm okay with it. Otherwise, I'm, I'm of the thought, if we're doing it, they're not going to. But i- if, if that's the case, I'm, I'm okay with it.
No, this will not be town personnel.
Right.
Okay.
And if you recall, um, back when we had the discussion, there were a number of reasons why it should not be town personnel.
Right, and that was one of them.
A safety factor being one, a huge one. Um, and, you know, the equipment being another one. So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I think there was consensus there. Great. Okay. Um, also, these were not in your packet, but just a couple of, um, things I wanted to mention. You may have received the email, um, just a memo from, um, the town manager to Candy Boyd, one of our employees in the recycling center. Um, there was a, um, a retiree that was down here. Um, he's a part-time resident in KDH. She really did a, a nice letter to town manager Diaz about the service, um, that he rece- received from Candy. And actually she was, I guess, enforcing or, um, kind of explaining our rules and regulations. And, you know, how rare is it that you actually get a compliment when you're enforcing rules and regulations? But we did. So I just wanted to go on record, thank you for sharing that with us and thank Candy for the service that she's providing. Um, also, uh, we received, um, this notification, um, from, uh, Police Chief Gary Brett about the, um, police officer, Justin Langley, completing his North Carolina Justice Academy's Traffic Enforcement and Investigation Certificate Program. So congratulations to him for completing that. And with that, that is all that I have under my agenda. Um, we'll move on to the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Town attorney's agenda?
Don't have anything else for you.
Okay. Um, the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, first item is the minutes from the February nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Second is budget amendment. This is to record contributions for printing the Historical Landmarks Commission's booklet. Um, third, um, is the government education access channel. Two items here. The first is a proposed budget for two thousand and fourteen fifteen. Um, this budget must be approved by each of the participant, um, members. The, um, the annual one thousand dollar membership fee remains in place as required for eligibility to receive video distribution funding from the state. Um, B is the draft inter-local shared use agreement regarding the government and education channels. Um, the changes are highlighted in the draft agreement and they include, um, membership upgrade, making a housekeeping correction under the indemnification section, and clarifying that elected officials and staff members may appear on the channels and the performance of their regular, um, duties. Um, not included in my memo is item number four, which we received in the mail today. Um, it's the Dare County Tourism Board Short Term Restrictive Fund Fireworks Grant. Um, the town did receive seven thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. It's an interesting amount. I think it's how, how they were divvying it up amongst the towns. Um, but this will, um, go towards our, um, Fourth of July celebration. An approval of the consent agenda would record the board's authorization for the manager to execute the contract, um, for this grant. And, um, staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So that grant would bring our cost from twenty down to about twelve, correct? Roughly?
Seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents.
Okay. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, discussion, under discussion, I'd just like to add, I actually currently sit on both the government education access channel. I guess I actually am the chair of the Government Education Access Channel Committee. Um, and I also sit on the, the tourism board. So with respect to these items that are on the agenda tonight for the Government Education Access Channel, um, anyway, just wanted to, you know, like, uh, the, the value that we get from the thousand dollar membership is phenomenal. I mean, uh, you know, we really have come huge, uh, made huge strides with our government education channel. We are now submitting, just as a town, a significant amount of content. And thank you, John, for your work on, on helping us with that. Um, but even the other towns have really followed suit. Several of them are, are doing things now that I think KDH took the lead in. Um, but I, I think it's a, a channel that we can be proud of as far as, as a, as a county on getting information out to citizens. Um, and then as far as just the overall, the budget and, um, what goes into preparing all the information to keep this channel on, on track. The channel administrator, Michael Adele, um, does an amazing job. He's really just top-notch and we're grateful, uh, to have his leadership there. And with respect to the tourism board and the odd amount of the funding, that's exactly what happened when we were making, um, the approval for that. There were actually four firework grant applications that were put in. It was Nags Head, Manio, Kittleville Hills, and then down south, um, I don't know if it was the Avon.
Avon.
Home, homeowners group. Um, but there was only enough funding based on three historical applications for fireworks. And so not to leave anyone out, the funds were equally divided amongst all four. Um, well, actually based on, I say it was equal, it was based on, it was an equal percentage based on the size of the project. So that's where ours came out. But anyway. Okay. There was a motion and a second. That was the discussion. Anyone else have anything they want to add?
I'll just add that the government access channel, in regards to what we talked about earlier, is no longer channel twenty. So just FYI.
That's true.
If you're watching, then you already know that.
That's probably why the administrator always cringes when we say that because it's habit and we shouldn't say it. We should call it the Government Education Channel. But thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, we'll move on now. This is the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that's still with us this evening that would like to, um, yes, Assistant Chief?
Dana Harris, Assistant Chief, Kittleville Police Department. I just wanted to mention that we had an employee, Debbie Caden, that retired just a month of thirty years of service. I just want to publicly thank her. She's not here in life, but publicly thank her for all the years of service she gave us.
Thank you so much for making that announcement. And yes, congratulate Debbie on her retirement. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at this public comment? Seeing no hands, we'll close public comment. And a motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Anything else? Okay. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Thanks. Thank you.